Was pressing for us to do last month, so we went ahead and we canceled that meeting. Is that appropriate, you guys think, or not? For us not to have a meeting if we don't have anything particularly pressing to work on?
I don't think we should feel obligated to have monthly meetings if there's no agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I think because we can reach out to each other and figure out.
Yeah.
If there's anything that needed.
Yeah, and if there is, I'm sure, I would hope anyway, that you guys would ping me and say, hey, I got something important I need to discuss with these people and it's needs to get done. So please do, if you hear, if you get the notice that we're going to cancel a meeting. And you do have something that you would like discussed, please ping me right away and we'll reestablish that meeting. Good. All right, first item of business after that is ad hoc committee reports. The one on funding, we've got a regular business item for, are there any other ad hoc reports out there that we need to cover? I know most of them are on hold because we are in this Zoom situation for any kind of meetings, but anything, anything else? No? Okay. Consent agenda is just the regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, so moved by Karen Dean and seconded by Tom Gray. All those in favor, aye? All those opposed? Okay, so it passes five zero. Thank you. All right, let's get on to regular business then.
We skipped.
Your Ygold, would you like to?
Karen's mentioning.
We skipped comment.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me. Well, the two people that are on that are listening in cannot comment. They're both on the board of directors, unless I guess if they have something that's not on the agenda that they would like to speak about. Oh, I don't see any hands going up over there. So we'll go back and sorry about getting out of step there. Thank you for reminding me, both of you. Or all five of you. Regular business, Mr. Ygold. Would you not kick us off on the CIP, please?
Sure, so when I arrived in the district, while we had a budget, we and we still don't have long-term goals established by the board. We do, we did need to do some planning from a fiscal perspective. So one of the things we didn't have in place was a long-term capital planning program. And so what we're doing on the staff is solvency early building that. So we have a pretty good one from the utility side that started with the PG&E program of some of the prioritized issues, and we expanded that to include all the things we need to do. A fiscal standpoint, project perspective such as replace all the meters in the water meters in the district, that's an example. But we didn't do that. We didn't have something like that in place for the rest of the district or especially on the general fund side, specifically the facilities and the fire department. So things were only coming up for discussion as part of the annual budget. And you know, that's, that's just not the prescribed way that you're on a organization. So I know at the county, they do that in a over a five-year period, the staff builds the plan for five years. Here are all the things we gotta do over the next five years, you know, replace five fire trucks. Redo sewage pipe, one-third of the sewage piping in the city, things like that. So that's my effort. It is to do that. So, so we built what is a start. It's, and this is a living document. So everything on here is, you know, could be cut, deleted, amended as we go along, as we get new pricing, as as we endeavor to look at setting up a not-for-profit for the Vets Hall. We might find that some people want to donate some of the things like Vets Hall chairs, which is actually happening. And so this will give us a basic tool to help do some of that planning. And eventually the goal will be from a finance standpoint is to actually schedule out to the exact year, some of these things will, will plug in and the board will have obviously approval authority on that. So, but we'll start working toward that as a staff. And we're actually getting a little ahead because we don't have goals and objectives for the district. We don't know how to think about some of these capital improvements. So the board guidance for from a strategic standpoint will give us that direction. And underneath that, we'll use this as a tool to get there. Does that make sense for everybody? So, so anyway, I'll, I'll screen share the, you know, what we've got here and I'll have to probably scroll down. And everybody, I can't know if I can see what you see.
Yeah, we can see the general fund projects on top with Tyler in code is the first.
Can you, can you see it? Yeah, I can't see what you see actually, because I'm seeing mine on the screen, obviously. Is that big enough font or should I?
It's a little, little small.
Tom's going to get his glasses.
That's good.
I guess a little better.
Okay.
Trying to find my my sizing here.
Yeah, down in the lower right-hand corner.
Autumn, right?
Yeah. You can also use your view menu, too.
Yeah, I just looked at that. I just looked at that to try to find, oh, here we go.
Yeah. Okay, whoa.
Yeah, I made it smaller. You were at 70%, so you need to be at something like
Hundred?
Yeah, or 80% anyway.
Well, that's not bad.
There you go.
A little bit better?
Yes.
Let me see if I can do it one bit.
Try a hundred, maybe.
I tried that, that, that.
Oh, how about eighty, eighty or eighty-five?
There you go.
There we go.
That's nice, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Dollar figures look bigger now.
So, so we basically broke these out into admin. So you'll see in blue reflects that it's in this year's budget. And, and red means, the red means that it's not yet scheduled. So you'll see for the admin department, we've got Tyler and Code, the new software system that we're installing that's budgeted out over 10 years. And then we put the district car in there because we know that we're gonna have to replace it someday. Don't know when, but it's just that it's just a placeholder. And then the next section is facilities there. So one of the things in this year's budget is the homeless personal property storage. As you know, when we dismantle a homeless camp, we now have to maintain all the belongings of the individuals. And so and we have to store that now until they come and get it. And we have to, we have to bring that, we have to keep it mobile so that we can lock it up. And then we can haul it out for them to come, come retrieve their belongings. So that's in this year's budget for 12,000. And then we have the F-150 truck replacement for the current 1999 one. And we're gonna, we plan to do that in probably Q3 when we, when the other vehicle is, is paid off. So we'll literally go from one car payment to another. From a, and then you see a number of home, or excuse me, Vets Hall.
The 1999 truck, we still owe money out of 1999 truck?
No, no, no. There's another vehicle that we're nearing the end of the payment plan for.
Okay.
So in other words, when we make the last payment on that, then we'll buy a new truck so we don't have overlapping cash flow.
Got it.
And so so there you'll see a number of Vets Hall and we put some skate park improvements there. We don't know the cost for that or the restroom improvement, so we just left that blank. The, the electric, we put the electric vehicle charging stations in. The, the grant funding is still in process for that, but it's looking very good. And we got some clarification from Tim Carmel's office that any, any matching grant can be fully recovered in the cost of that we charge customers for the, for the charging. So everything from future operations and maintenance and the cost of our out-of-pocket cost for a grant can all be recovered. So we essentially get a zero cost to put those charging stations up. But that's yet, we don't want the grant yet. We need board approval to proceed on, on anything here that's not in the budget. Onto the fire department. A number of these things you saw in the budget request already. Some things you didn't. So fuel station, computer, a the fire station security, we have people, we don't have a fenced-in fire department property system. So people can just drive right through the fire station property. And they go at speed through there, too. We have horses that are going through there. So it could be a dangerous situation at times there, particularly when the the firemen have hoses laid out, another equipment laid out on the roads. If someone comes barreling on through, they're gonna run over something or someone. So, so that's a large, large nut there. And then I put all the replacement for the fire truck in there. We, we don't necessarily have a a specific date, but the chief puts some estimates in there for the fiscal years. We also put in a fire station expansion. Those who've either been around a while know that we have plans on the table or plans available, I should say, to expand the fire station. Including moving admin there, so we don't have to continue to rent admin space. And you know, we might, we might consider in the future, I know they've considered it in the past, is moving the healthcare district over there for the ambulance group, which works closely with our group anyway. So we just, again, all these are, are just space holders and we, we, we just put them in this draft. None of this is necessarily all that official, other than trying to get some stuff on the captured. So you can see we have about, out of that whole 5.1 million, almost 5.2 million dollars, only 164,000 is, is budgeted this year. And so, you know, that's a lot of money for a lot of projects. And depending on whether these are things we really want to do or have, some of them are, we have to do in the future. We can start thinking about how well we'll do this over a longer term. Then we have
It also gives you a target for grants if we start doing that.
Absolutely.
Good estimates in here is what things are gonna cost, we can start doing that.
Absolutely, you're exactly right, Dave, because once, once we ID the capital, the capital projects, then we can start seeking the grants and funds and for those projects.
So I still don't understand the column that says 10-year. Whatever it is. 10-year funding? I'm not, 10-year cost?
So we, we, some of the things we do have a, have a 10-year pay, payback to it. And I think we just use that as, as a nominal timeframe to look at. The county uses five-year outlook. I think Pam just put 10 years in there.
Okay.
Pam, if you're listening, maybe you can address the 10-year cost column there. I think we just, we have a couple of items I think may go out to 10 years, but other than that, I think it's, it's just a placeholder, basically.
She was out there as a, as I
I'm here.
Pam, you there?
I'm here.
Yeah, can you talk on the, on the column that says 10-year cost? I think we just, that's either got a couple of projects or, you know, we just stuck 10 years in there for now.
So the 10-year cost column is what we did for water and wastewater, if you recall. There was a 10-year outlook on the project for all costs. And then what you see in the fiscal year project cost column is what's actually in the budget. So anything that's not in the budget should be in your 10-year cost.
Okay, it's just, it's just a little bit confusing because, you know, it appears to me that that's what it's gonna cost over 10 years. And I'm not sure that that's really
Well, this is, so the purpose of this spreadsheet, remember, is a 10-year CIP outlook. And we don't have it in year one through 10. That's, that's just like the total that's out there for that project.
So it's not necessarily tied to a specific project, but it's the 10-year cost of everything on a list.
Correct. Because like if you, if you, Sean, if you flip over to the tab for wastewater or for water on the bottom of your screen. It makes more sense because a lot of the water and wastewater projects are in a cycle. Some things have been done, some work has not been even started. So I think in revising the CIP list, this is the most current version. That was approved by RNI that's gone to the board. And so we followed suit with that same plan that you've been looking at for the water and for the wastewater funds. We did the same for the general fund. So eventually, when you start seeing activity happen in the project, like if you look at the Tyler project, you will see what the total cost of the project is, which that's in your 10-year cost. And then what is budgeted in the fiscal year and what has actually been expended to date are in the different columns. So Tyler is the best example to look at on the general fund tab. Because that actually has activity in all three columns.
Okay.
And then Pam, as we discussed, too, we could add other future columns for the, by a single year. So we know what next year's budget, the year after that, the year after that. We could literally move things around to understand the capital cost for each specific year.
Well, yeah, but then our worksheet's gonna be huge. So we, and we want to be uniform in all the funds. So, you know, we just kind of need to think through that. If we're gonna more the general fund in one way, do we want all the funds to look the same way? So I think the latest version that everybody decided on for the utilities funds was this version that we're looking at.
Okay, any other questions from any of the rest of the committee?
Can we get a copy of this? Or is it on the website or?
No, because it's a draft version. It's not on the website.
Okay, so can our RNI committee members get a copy of this?
Sure. I sent Dave a copy already, but I can send it out to the rest of the, rest of the group.
Thank you.
Right. It won't go on our website until it's finalized. And it's probably something that if it's finalized, then maybe it could go with the quarterly report, the first quarter report. And then it can be a public document.
Okay.
Published on our website.
That makes sense.
Right, because we don't want to put a draft out there and people not understand it's in draft version.
Yeah. So I would suggest that the committee review this and make some notes on it or whatever, and at our next meeting we'll get comments from the committee and recommend moving it on to the board. Does that sound feasible, people?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Terrific, terrific. All right. Anything else on the CIP for now? All right, thank you, Mr. Ygold.
I'm trying to figure out where I
Unshare, yeah.
Share.
I'm impressed you had it there.
We're down below usually, it's in the bottom somewhere. Yeah, there's a ribbon across the bottom.
Okay.
Of your screen that should, it's right in the middle of a share screen.
Well, I don't even, yeah, I don't even have it up right now, so.
I think it's the Excel button. It's the green one with the X in it because you're showing an Excel document. If you click on that one. Oops.
You just have yours.
Well, we still have his screen up.
Yeah.
Down, down on the bottom, there's a ribbon across that has on the right, far right says leave, and the far left says mute and stop video. In the middle of it, it has commands, one of them is share screen. On the bottom of your, of your Zoom screen.
Yeah, and that's what I can't get to. Oh, wait, here we go.
Get out of full screen, leave full screen. If you can.
Yeah, that's up top.
Up top, the full screen command.
There we go.
Okay, there, now try it.
All right. We're back.
Okay.
Very good.
Tech support from the committee.
All right. Onto the next item on the agenda, which is a report on progress of the SST funding ad hoc. And I went ahead and made a little report here. Which I can update and then there are two other members of the committee here, so they can, they can then update some more or, or talk some more to this. First of all, Melissa sent me where she was with the USDA and they're still making progress. And trying to figure out exactly if our project qualifies. So their engineer is talking to our engineer to find out exactly what the scope of work is so that they can say, yes, this is a good possibility for our, our loan. They already decided that we are not, we do not have a grant opportunity because we have a higher than the cutoff on average annual income per population. So we can't get a grant from USDA, but we can still get a low-interest loan. The interest on that loan currently is somewhere about 1.8%, which is pretty damn good. So it would be a good possibility and Melissa's still working on that. And if she needs my help with the congressman or whatever, we'll get on that. Let's see, the other update that I had on this, I did talk to CSDA about their program. And they are very similar to what PG&E is doing for us in that their organization, CSDA, merely takes our information and sends it out for proposals to come back from private in financial companies. So once we get the PG&E RFP, we'll be able to copy, paste some of that and make applications both to CSDA and to the I-Bank. And they can then come back and tell us, you know, what, what, what they found for us and what, what they think they could do for us. So far, the 1% at the Energy Commission is looking like the best interest rate, but they do not loan much more than 3 million. And other than that, the 1.8, obviously USDA is pretty good. The I-Bank was talking in the 2 to 2.5 range, so that would not be as good. Karen also is still pursuing another venue, so maybe Karen can fill you in on how she's doing on that one right now.
Okay, so I had talked about at our meeting contacting the Sustainable Energy Bond Program. And I wasn't getting a response from my emails or my phone calls, but she did finally call me back. And they're interested in setting up a phone call tomorrow afternoon to talk about our project. This, this outfit normally deals with an ESCO company and they start from scratch, the way we started from scratch with PG&E. But what she is doing is, the lady I talked to is talking to the director of this place and seeing if they will consider looking at our projects just in terms of financing rather than starting from scratch, looking at financing, using all of the PG&E information. They are supposed to call me back later today or tomorrow morning to see if it will work for them to look at this. And if so, I have a time period set up between 2:00 and 3:30 tomorrow afternoon to talk to the director of this program. So that's as far as I've gotten with this, but at least someone called me back and did express some interest, so I'll keep you updated.
Good, then you said this was a bond program, so they help you issue bonds, is that the idea?
It is a bond program, but they're also, they also do sustainable energy financing. So I'm waiting to talk to the lady when she calls me back to let me know if this, what we're doing right now with PG&E is something that they can consider financing. So I'll just get back to you when I know, and I think David expressed an interest in being part of the phone call if the director was willing to discuss this with us.
Okay. Questions? Comments and anything, I think the ad hoc committee has done a really good job of, of scratching out the possibilities and stuff. And we can now follow up and move forward on the ones that we think we have a shot at. It's unfortunate that so far we haven't been able to find anything in the grant area, although Dwayne is still working with some of the clean water and safe water people to see if their grants are applicable to what we're trying to do.
And I, I think their loan programs are very good, too. I think they're in that range of 1% or so. This, the clean water revolving funds.
Yeah.
They're better than I-Bank, I think, but I don't understand.
Looking at their website, he didn't think it was a very good fit because we were talking wastewater and they're talking about water systems more, but we'll see what, we will see what he finds out.
Yeah, there's a, there, there's the Clean Water Revolving Fund, which I think is wastewater. And there's a drinking water, there's two funds, but the clean water one sounds like the one, it's like an EPA program, I think, with, in conjunction with, with water resources. But I think that's, that specifically is about water treatment, wastewater treatment. So with, you know, make sure we're targeted. So with, you know, make sure we're targeting the right one, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Karen?
Well, the fact that our wastewater treatment facility is tied together with our sustainable water facility, does that make it applicable? Because it does, you know, work with the drinking water program.
Yeah, it might. Tertiary treatment.
Yeah. You need to talk to somebody, I guess, to get the details of it because the websites aren't always that revealing. I had one question about for Dave about the Energy Commission application. Did Melissa get any feedback at all or anything? Because I emailed, we haven't started yet or anything, and I sent her an email last week, but did she get any sort of information from them yet? The Energy Commission?
Yeah, not that I know of.
Okay. We'll continue working on that.
Good. Paul?
Yeah, I was wondering, and I'm just looking at the world right now and the interest rates and the rest of that whole thing. I can see inflation kind of swallowing a lot of our plans up in, in this. And do we have contingencies or any thoughts on that as far as, you know, say if, if interest rates aren't 1% or if the cost of this project were to say 50% increase because of, of, you know, inflation, so.
Well.
Maybe I'm just more of a doomsdayer than anybody else. I just want to say, so I'll just start with that.
Okay, that's okay. You need that, you need that in the group. So right now, and we'll, we'll, a good segue into the next portion here is a report on the latest IDA meeting that happened on September 3rd, where they updated us some more. They are at the point where the drawings are pretty close to being done enough so that they can take it out for bids. Okay? And so once that pricing comes back, PG&E kind of locks in that price. And locks it in for like the six month period that we get to, you know, go find financing. So we're good for that, okay? Hopefully, you know, in the, in the next, I think in the next two or three months, John, unless, unless I'm wrong there, I think that's about what they're looking at is, is sometime the beginning of November at the latest, they would have the, the stuff out for bids and they'd get the prices back in November or so. And, and then present that to us and say, okay, how do you, how do you want to proceed on this? And then we can figure out which chunks we want to do and how we want to go about doing them. My, my prefer, preference would be to do as much of it as we possibly can, because like you said, interest rates aren't going to be this low forever. And also, you know, there's that inflation specter out there that, that, that was going to happen at some point in time. So that's the timing that they're now looking at because the drawings are getting closer and closer to being done. At the same time, they've come forward with this financing option and they're going to put out an RFP after we approve it to get private financiers to make proposals to us that say, okay, you know, we will finance your project for 20 years at X rate, right? And so we'll get several of those proposals from them. Hopefully we'll get something from I-Bank, we'll get something from CSDA. And then we'll be able to look at what financing we've got and how we can, how we can get the job done. You know, we have to be careful because we need to make sure that the 218 rate increase is going to not only pay for the loan over the loan timeframe, but also we'd have extra to do, you know, emergency work and to put something into reserves and that kind of thing. So we need, we need to gather this as the ad hoc committee. And both the finance committee and our committee is going to be able to, we may have to have a joint meeting to kind of decide, okay, this is the scope we're going to go after and we'll go and stuff. So basically, I gave you a short report on how that meeting went and it went really well. I, I thought they had done a good job of updating the plans. They moved some pumps over here and they moved some other things over here and they did a few other things that made more sense on, on the project to make it probably a little bit less expensive also. But overall, most of the projects were as they've been described all the way along. And I think the pricing is going to come out, you know, somewhere about what they were talking about. The one that really is going to be different is lift station B1, which is the one by the hardware store, which is the one that when I was first led around, as after I became a director, John Alton gave me a tour of all the lift stations. And when I saw that lift station down there, I, I, I said, whoa, we got to do something about this immediately because it is down in a, in a, in a low lying area and it's right next to the creek, Santa Rosa. And if that thing ever overflowed, we would have a major issue, even if there was just a little bit of a spill. Some of it would probably make its way into Santa Rosa Creek and that's, that's, you know, not good. Okay? So that needs to be moved. So just last week, Ray and I and John Alton met with the owner of the hardware store, who I know from the American Legion, and Chuck agreed to let us have a corner of his property there to put a lift station, if that's what we want to do. At the same time, Ray came up with a great idea, which was remove the lift station entirely and allow that, that arm of sewage to go down to the lift station that is on the rodeo grounds. So we would have to dig a tube, a pipe through underneath the bridge area, okay? And down into the rodeo grounds, lift station area. But Ray thinks that's possible. And if it is, that's wonderful because it does two things. One, to get some rid of the possibility of a spill anywhere around there. And two, we no longer have a lift station to maintain and we no longer spend money on the energy to run the pumps and stuff there. And all transfers on down to the lift station at rodeo grounds, which is fully capable of handling the extra, because that particular lift station really only handles 10 city and two residences that are in the back there. So it's not a very big lift station to begin with, but it's in a precarious position. So I, I think moving it, number one is the first thing, good thing. The second thing is if we can get this gravity done, that would be really outstanding. So I was really, really glad to see that, that Ray is thinking outside the box and trying to find different solutions and stuff. Tom?
To put numbers on that, what would be the difference in cost roughly of replacing the lift station, moving and replacing the lift station? Plan A and Plan B was what Ray is talking about, just not have a lift station at all and piping it down to rodeo grounds. Is, is there a difference in costs that you could even estimate at this point?
Ray? Yeah, good question, Tom. The, the, the cost would probably be very similar, actually. The, because the, the lift station that, that were, that were, lift station B1, we, we had to put it in that portion, you know, in the, in hardware store, there would be an easement cost to that. And then there was also the problem of the generator, the backup generator that we, we also needed for that. So those two costs alone would probably equal the cost of construction of a new sewer line. And, and just to, to clarify what, what Dave Pearson said, the there is no more, there is no lift station in, in, in the rodeo grounds. It would all gravity all the way to the plant. So
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so it's free energy all the way to the plant for, for life. And, and even if the cost was, say, a couple of hundred thousand more, the, the cost of energy savings over the life of the, of the system and operational costs would be worth it. So it's, it's a question of, is it feasible? And, and at first, at first look, it is feasible. We have, we have enough gravity fall to be able to do the, to do it. The challenge is going to, and my, my guess is why they didn't do this idea back in the seventies or whenever they did it was, they probably didn't have the, the, the technology, the jacking board technology at that time. So I think we have better construction techniques this time and we should be able to, to do it. So that's our first priority to, to be sure that that's done. And we, we've given direction to our design team that we want to get, we want, we want this solution, you know, and, and if we can't do it, then we, we still have that backup plan of having the lift station on the hardware store property.
Is, is there anywhere else in the system this could be done?
Actually, I, I, I am looking at that. So there, because there, there are some sections where, for example, there's, there's another lift station where it only lifts it up five feet. And I'm also looking at that too. So, yeah, but, but, but it wasn't originally part of this PG&E.
Exactly. I asked that question because of the Energy Commission. You know, their, their thinking is that if it saves a lot of energy, it's, it falls into their, the scope of their, of their loans, the 1% loans. This, this may be something for like the next round, if we go after, you know, the stuff on the SSD project now, but, you know, the, the next round of, of funding we want, want to get, if it really is a, a, a money making, you know, proposition, money saving proposition and energy saving proposition, we might want to consider that for another round.
Absolutely. Yeah, that sounds like a great, great idea.
Ray, when do we think that the engineers will be able to get back to us with a go or no go on, on whether this will work?
Probably in the next, probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably know.
Okay, that'd be great. Very great. All right. Any other questions on the update that we got from PG&E at the beginning of the month? Okay, I must have done a good job on my report. All right, so we're now on to future agenda items. I have written down that we're going to have comments and action on the revised CIP that you guys are going to review in the next couple of days. But are there any other future action items or future agenda items that anybody would like to put on the agenda? Now?
I was thinking, this is, maybe this is more an ad hoc committee thing, but maybe we should come to the committee now and then is where are we in the process of the urban water management plan update on that, in that maybe periodic review of what, what is being done and me, maybe getting a report, something from the consultant.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we're going to do another update on our financing ad hoc committees too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. We'll do ad hoc committee reports and that will certainly have a report out for sure. All right. Very good. Thank you, people. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless somebody else has anything else they want to talk about. All right.
Thank you.
Be safe and healthy.
You will, we will. Thank you very much, Steve.